Well, good morning, everybody joining us. Appreciate you guys attending. First and foremost, I hope everybody's safe and taking care of your family. And hopefully, your businesses and work and everybody will come back up and flourish when this thing gets lifted. But God bless you all. Dennis Burrell and myself, I'm Ken Aiden, started this just because we love to talk football. And I think Dana can attest to that. And we do have two members of the NMA with us, Dusty Young and Dana Pappas. We'll get to Dana in just a moment, but we do want to announce a couple of upcoming guest speakers that we have. Dennis, give us the names and the deets, please.
Yeah, so this week on Tuesday, we'll have Pac-12 referee, former umpire Frank Vilar. That will be on Tuesday at 6:00. On Wednesday, we'll have another Pac-12 umpire on Wednesday night at 6:00. Roscoe. And on Thursday, we'll be the Division II MAC quarterback.
And did you figure out your audio problems from Monday?
Hey, Todd, mute yourself. Could you guys, could everybody please turn off your cameras and mute? Everybody mute your computers and turn off your cameras.
And then on, so on Thursday, we have Mike Contreras, who will talk to the group at 6:00 PM on Thursday. And then next Saturday will be NFL referee Brad Rogers giving us another talk. Thanks for joining us, Mr. Land Clark. Looks like he's logged on.
Dana? Yes, Dana Pappas, could you please introduce our guest?
I surely will. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for joining us on this fine Saturday morning. It is exciting to have the special guest on the phone. I've been fortunate enough to know Land the entire time I've worked at the NMA office. And I'm not doing a real formal introduction. I think it's more of a personal one. Land, of course, worked collegiate football in both Mountain West and in the Pac-12. He was a referee in the Pac-12, and I think he called a bowl game pretty much every year that he was a collegiate official. He did call the national championship between Alabama and Notre Dame. And for those of you who watched that game, the most exciting part of it was that Land was the referee. It was, it was not much of a game, but it was certainly exciting to see Land on that stage. Land, of course, is in the NFL. He's entering his third season in the league and was just promoted, I believe, within the last week to the position referee. One of the things that I think is important to remember about Land, really has nothing to do with his officiating resume, which is absolutely impressive, but Land is one of the most humble individuals that you'll ever meet. He's absolutely extraordinary when it comes to his football knowledge. And he's absolutely forgotten more about the sport than many of us will ever know. But Land has continually paid it forward and ensured that he gives back to the little guy, which would be all of us. He always wants to help. He always wants to give back, and he's always looking for ways to stay involved with high school officials. One of the things about Land is, a number of years ago, I used to have Land do a lot of film breakdown for us. A number of years ago, he called me at the end of the season. I was like, well, why didn't you send me a film? And this was right when he had gotten into the league, and I was pretty sure that he had bigger fish to fry. But he's a man without ego, and he's somebody who is just kind of an icon of officials here in the state of New Mexico and a great friend to me personally and to the New Mexico Officials Association. He comes and speaks every year at Ken Murphy's camp here in Albuquerque. And he's just a true asset to the New Mexico Officials Association, New Mexico Activities Association. And definitely, I am a fan and I'm hoping for a fall season in the NFL so that we can all see Land doing his thing on the big stage. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce a good friend of all of ours, Mr. Land Clark.
Thanks, Dana. I hope everybody. I'm shutting everybody off in the, in this new odd reality we're in. Everybody's safe. So Ken asked me to talk about whatever I wanted to, and he gave me a few options. What I decided to do is just kind of lump them all together. That is something that I feel is probably the most important part about officiating, and that is game management. Those of you who have heard me speak before, you know, this is kind of the bread and butter. So if I can figure out how to do this, I'll try to shift the screen. Somebody can turn this over to me.
So, yeah, can you hear me, Land? Dennis, are you helping him out? And please, everybody turn off your microphones. Thank you.
Everybody seeing that PowerPoint now?
No, hold on. Yes, sir, we got you.
Yep, we got it.
Perfect. So it's, I think, you know, it's more than just your calls. I know all of us, you know, as soon as the game's over, if we can get the video, we get the video. And we're looking at, you know, that pass interference, so that holding ball, make sure we got it right. But football officiating is just more than that. It's how we manage the game and how we deal with players, deal with coaches, in a lesser degree, deal with fans. Quote here from Tom Landry, you know, I think it's true. I mean.
You sure?
Yeah.
We, we're always looking for that big call. And I think, you know, if that comes your way, you get to call it, that's great. But I had a Big 12 referee told me a long time ago, and it made a lot of sense. Don't let rate get in the way of good. And there's, there's a lot of errors in the NFL where, quote, game managers at QB. And that's, I think, a lot what we need to be, is manager. Because, you know, the game is yours, and if you manage it well, everybody's okay. We're gonna miss calls, we're gonna miss pass interference, we're gonna miss a clip, maybe, maybe even a safety foul. That's, you know, that's just gonna happen. It happens to us in real time. From one angle, things are gonna get away from us. But if we look good doing it and manage it on the field, we still have credibility and a game is gonna go okay. So dealing with coaches, I think, is an important part of that. I know, I don't know if there's any coaches in the room, but it's a tough job. And I think as officials, we kind of look at coaching through our perspective, which is flawed. We, we spend a lot of time doing this officiating deal, but it's not nearly what they spend. And so just, just to realize that when you go out there and shake that referee's hand and introduce yourself, there's an exchange of power there that that coach, who for the previous week is in charge of everything. When the players get up in the morning, what they eat for breakfast, the meetings they go to, the workouts, the practices. He is the king. And then when he shakes your hand, he's giving that up to you to manage that football game. And he's not liking it much, and that's just a fact. So kind of keep that in mind and be cognizant of that. You're dealing with somebody who's not used to that position, so make sure you are sensitive to that reality. These individuals, this is their, their life. This is, you know, many of them, it's all they do. So, yeah, they're gonna be biased. They're not gonna, they're not gonna worry about fair. They're not gonna worry about, you know, what's, even what's right or wrong. These, they have an emotional interest in all these players and certainly in the, in the game. So, yeah, they're, they're gonna have a slant that's, it's, at times, not even rational, but that's okay. But if you understand that, you can kind of be a little bit, it's a little bit easier to deal with. And you can, can help them through some of those contentious discussions if you, if you look at it through their eyes. And realize that a lot of time, coaches, they're just venting. You know, they're upset because the play didn't work, or that individual player did foul, and now they're backed up. So recognize that sometimes the coach is just venting, and sometimes the coach is using you to motivate players. I think we've all kind of seen that, when a coach will just lose his mind, and it doesn't really make sense. Well, it may not make sense to you, but that demonstrative interaction with you, he may be looking to fire up his team that he thinks is, you know, maybe playing a little flat or, or not trying hard. So again, look at it from their perspective. It makes it a little bit easier to deal with. And remember, it's not personal. It really isn't. It's, it's not about you. It's, you know, most of these, you know, some of you know coaches pretty well, but that's kind of the exception. Where, you know, we show up on game day, hours together, but, you know, the rest of the time, we don't know who these people are. So it kind of comes with the job. You get the bad polyester suit and the target on your back. They're gonna take some stuff out on you, and as long as it's not personal, it's, it's not personal. But when it gets personal, that's, that's a problem. I think, you know, we can, we can let a coach vent, and we can let him yell, and, but when it, when that sentence begins with you, then, then we gotta draw a line, because that tends to snowball. The teams hear it, the other coaches hear it, and, and it, it can get out of hand. And I don't know about any of you, but I've been doing this a while, and I have never come to a coach when he's upset and he called what I called, and he looks me in the eye and says, okay, Land, yeah, you're right. It just doesn't happen. So it's okay to agree to disagree and just say, okay, coach, that's what I saw, that's what I called. And let the, let the video justify your call. Don't try to convince anybody of anything. Mostly because sometimes the video will tell you you're wrong. So just, you know, just agree to disagree, and that's okay. But as long as you're interacting with the coach and it's, it's professional, it'll mostly go okay. You try to ignore them, and it's just like your spouse, they just start talking louder. So just deal with them. Some of you are very, very good communicators, and you can have those, sometimes even heated discussion with coaches, aren't quite that good. So I think my best communication often with the coach is I nod my head. I look at him, make eye contact, nod my head, yeah, coach, I got you, and, and move on. Oftentimes, he's just looking to be heard. And then recognize that it's the whole game. It's from, you know, the time we step out onto the field until we get back into the, into the bus or the, or the car to go home, beginning in, in the pregame. Yeah. One thing I think we all need to be cognizant of is reception is reality. You know, eyes are always on us. I don't care if you're working a freshman game on Milne 2, or you're working a big high school game on Friday night, or, or what. People are, are always looking at you. You know, this is, just for instance, this shot you see here, that person right there is Bill Levy. He is the referee supervisor in the NFL. Adrian and I are going around doing our pregame thing, and we're being watched. You never know. It doesn't really matter whether it's the supervisor or another coach or just a fan. I just remember you were always on. Your credibility starts the minute you walk outside with that striped shirt. So just, you're onstage, so play the part. During the pregame, always open the lines of communication before the contention. You know, if that first conversation you have with the quarterback or, you know, the defensive captain or a coach or, or anybody, if that first conversation is after you've thrown the flag, that's probably not gonna go nearly as well as if you talked before. I always talk to players and coaches before the game, try not to get in the way. But I do wanna, you know, a quick introduction, especially as a referee. I'll introduce myself to, to both quarterbacks. Let them know if they need anything, let me know. If they want to discuss something further, absolutely. If they want to go back to work, I let them go back to work. So, but that helps. Your perception from the people also helps you. I mean, if you just go out there and stand with your hands in your pocket, and that very first play from scrimmage, something happened, you're not gonna be ready. So go out there, watch some football, watch them warm up. I think it'll, it'll help your game. Probably the, you know, the biggest time we're, we're evaluated on game management is foul administration. This is when everybody quits looking at us, or quits looking at the game and starts looking at us. So we need to be sharp. It begins, you know, the minute we, we throw that flag. Actually, it begins even before that. I know in the high school ranks, you guys aren't crude, and even in small college, it kind of mixes up a little bit. But regardless of how often you call together, make sure you agree as a crew what needs to be called. You know, I don't, nobody comes to a football game to watch a bunch of middle-aged people in black and white suits, you know, throw penalties and talk about it. So let's make sure those fouls have meaning in the game. And, and, because a lot of times, we can be technically correct, but some of those technical correct calls kind of get rid, in the, mess up the flow of a football game. So throw what you need to throw. If it means something, absolutely. That's why we're out there, to balance that. And, you know, players are looking for an edge, and you need to level out that playing field when it comes to fouls. But again, we're gonna miss some of these. We're gonna get a lot of them right. I don't, average football official just has no idea how hard it is what you do. It's a tough job, but you're gonna get, you know, 95% of them right. And, you know, if the people who work for you in your regular job were that accurate, you probably be okay with it. We're expected to be right 100% of the time. So remember, it, it starts before, but then when that flag comes out, we really gotta tighten it up. And we may get the foul right or wrong. That really doesn't matter. But the administration of a penalty, there is no excuse to screw that up. There's three, four, five, six, seven, eight of you out there, and it's everybody's responsibility. So, you know, if, if a crew screws up a penalty enforcement, costs the team a game, you're all probably gonna get sat down. And if you really want to give your career over to some idiot in a white hat, you're just not very bright. Take ownership, helps them out. It, you know, this is my deal. I, I think of foul administration is like shooting free throws. You do it the same way every time, regardless whether it's a false start or, you know, a double with and a double after, and there's, you know, there's 12 flags on the field. Because if you do it the same way, it becomes almost muscle memory. So, you know, make sure there's a flag at the spot of the foul. There is, we, you get a football and you set it on the grass at the end of the run. If it's a kick, we've got a beanbag at the end of the kick. Of course, the previous spot is, is static, and hopefully, I can figure out. Well, I'll illustrate this in the next slide, but let's, so hold that thought. We report to the referee, excuse me. You know, every referee does, wants fouls reported to them differently. But whatever way that is, if they look good, you look good, so help your, help yourself look good and give it to them the way you, you want it. Adrian Hill, first-year referee in the league this year, and I refereed for quite a while in college. He wanted actual, over the radios, over the official-to-official, wanted the, the number called out during his announcement, which was incredibly hard for me to do, because if you're on my crew and you talk while I'm announcing, I will kill you. I got enough voices in my head. I don't need yours, but that's what he wanted. So I tried very hard to, to do it, and when, when he got that, that number, he, he was better. So we were better. So do whatever they want, because it'll make you look better. You know, there's, there's a basic rule that I don't think we, we really spend a lot of time on, but it, it just looks so horrible if a referee has to come back to you to ask you something. It looks like the whole crew doesn't know what they're doing. So always let the referee turn away from you first. I know it's a small thing, and I know your adrenaline's going, because that's a big call, and you're thinking about it. And, you know, and that, that plays on a wheel, and it's going around and around in your head. So you're excited, and you want to write it down and get that description, so you get that great grade. But, you know, slow down. Speed kills when it comes to penalty enforcement. You gotta be efficient, but if you start hurrying, that's when we mess it up. So let, let the referee turn away from you, and then you can go about your business. Always help with numbers. However, referee wants to help, help with numbers. I do a pretty good job with one number. You get me past that, and, and I'm out, because I don't want to be so worried about, worried about three numbers that I point the wrong way. So I look for help, but however your referee wants that, you know, if you have the radios, that's obviously an efficient way. But if you gotta stand in front and yell, everybody knows what's happening. We're not telling anybody, so it's, it's okay. And as long as we get it right, we look good, penalties administered right, we are golden. Coach's options, you know, this is a, we, we've gotten so good at this over the last several years about just enforcing the, the obvious penalty. However, what's that has led to is that coaches aren't used to dealing with option. So talk about it in your crews, you know, if you, you know, it's third and 10, and they throw a touchdown pass, and there's offensive holding, well, obviously, we're gonna mark off the holding. That's just a no-brainer. But as a sideline official, go tell the coach what you're gonna do. Because then he's used to you on a foul coming to him and talking to him. So that way, if it's, you know, if it, well, I mean, that's something NFL specific. But if you've got, let's say you've got defenses lined up and neutralized, I think that's consistent. And they, and they gain six yards. Well, if he's used to come, you come and add him on penalties, even when there's really no option, it's not gonna be a surprise when you say, hey, coach, you went first and, and five, or second and fourth. And he's, again, he's used to that. He's going to make a decision. I don't know why. He's probably gonna have to ask somebody upstairs, because maybe the air is better up there, and they can make better decisions. I don't know, but they always do it. However, it will help you be a little bit more efficient. And lastly on this, again, whether it's a false start or an easy penalty enforcement, always go through your verification process. Have the umpire go to the spot, give, whether it's a 510 or 15, however, the crew would like to do that. March it off together, and never, ever put the wall on the ground until everybody's good. Because if you bend over, pick up a football and move it somewhere else, somebody knows you don't know what you're doing. You can stand there and wander around with it for quite a bit. Nobody cares. But you go back to a football and pick it back up, it's, it's, it's no secret you've made a mistake. So in that case, take your, take your time, make sure you're right. And everybody checks off on where that penalty is enforced from, and two, you're on it. And then clock status, every time, get together, however you want to do it, verify the clock status. You go through, great pass interference call, you nailed the enforcement. You know, it's just, you do everything right. You, you put it at the right spot, and you, you forget to wind the clock or you wind it when you're not supposed to.
Greg Santos, that's you. We have several people who.
We have several people who have their microphone on. Sorry, Lan, go ahead. Lan, you're muted.
How's that? Okay, you're good.
Much better.
Okay. So let's say we snap at the 30, we've got a down box that says third down over there at the sideline. And let's just say, you know, we've got to run around this, this side. And they're down at the, at the B45. So this is the end of the run. Sometime during that penalty, or sometime during that run, we have a penalty. Let's say we've got a, right here, we've got an OH. Well, if we're doing this all in the abstract, it's hard to piece that together. I think most officials are visual people. So if I've got a flag down here at the spot, and I set a football down at the end of the run, I know where the previous spot is. It is completely obvious to everybody what we're doing. So there's been a preliminary signal of holding on the offense. It is a, it is a piece of cake to officiate. Conversely, same kind of play, we'll start here at the 30, third down. Run here, ends at the 45. Forgive me, it's hard to write on this thing. And we have an OH on the B45. Lot of foul. So we've got a foul down on 145, a football sitting on the other 45, the previous spots to 30. We know we're going from the end of the run and we mark it off. It, it is just so simple if you have that visual. But to have that visual, you've got to do it every time. To get into that rhythm and to make sure you're consistent. Because when, now you've got that same play, but you've also got roughing the passer. And you've got, you've got a defensive hold. Well, now, again, if we have flags down in the right place, ball down at the end of the run, then it's just administrating. And we've got a clear image in our mind about where we're going from and where we're going to. Okay, other things that I think are important to game management. Many of you don't have replay, but you know, a few of you do. This is a important time to, to make sure you get it right. I won't spend a lot of time on replay because I know many of you don't have to deal with it. Thank goodness. Hopefully, we don't have to deal with it and pass interference anymore. That was a challenge. But it's just, it's, it's a whole lot like penalty enforcement. Do it the same way, do it consistently, make sure the whole crew's involved in, in that process so that when you come out of it, everything's communicated, we get the play going and they quit looking at us and start watching what they came there for. And that's, that's the watch football. Measurements. Many years ago, I had a game in the Big Ten. Tough game, great atmosphere. It was that Texas Tech. And we know, we had some, we had some really tough calls and got a lot of them right. We missed a couple of them, but just, it's a really good, good game. And Mr. Anderson called me afterwards and said, great game. And then proceeded to tell me how we butchered a measurement. Because it looked bad, and it did. I mean, we had players in the way and we had to stretch the chain twice. Because it, it takes away from your credibility if you, if you're fumbling around out there. I hope this picture is blurry enough so you can't tell who's who other than Joe LaRue, because you can see his number, but he's doing okay. But you, you see that, that posture by that umpire, you know, he's got his hands in his pockets. Veteran official, you know, he's done this a thousand times, but it, it doesn't look good. So be a measurement, whether it be, you know, spotting the football, ball mechanics, any of those things. Just remember, you are, you are on stage. We are all, as officials, actors in this production. So don't, don't get out of character. People see that. Most don't appreciate it when we are not professional out there. Timeouts, I know it's usually a great time to sort of, you know, take a breath and relax. But certainly you don't have to be as dialed in as you do for those 68 seconds during the play. You still have to be dialed in. You relax your body posture and, or you're just goofing around with another member of the crew. People see that. Very serious to a lot of people, needs to be serious to us. That's not to say we can't have fun out there and smile. That's, that's not what I mean. I just mean that we always look and act professional because it's part of managing the game. Halftime as well. We live in an age where everybody's got a video camera in their pocket. And we running off the field or walking back on the field. Doing something stupid or saying something stupid. Very, very good chance that somebody has that on tape. So just don't put yourself in that position. Make sure you manage the locker room. I know that sounds a little odd, but if there are people wandering in and out of there, which they certainly always are on the, on the higher levels, people coming in and coming out. Well, that's, that's okay to a point. If you need to have a discussion with the crew about a call or a situation or a coach, make sure you're the only people in there. Vital. Towel guy doesn't hear somebody on the crew complain about what a coach said. You know what? That's getting back to them. Manage that as well. You know, I talked a little bit about clocks at penalty enforcement, but that's every down. It's everybody's responsibility. Oh, if you, you call a perfect game, but let, you know, two minutes run off the clock. You're that crew that didn't know what they were doing. I know clock operators can be challenging at times. If, if you work with them and are constantly vigilant, resets tend to embarrass them. They, they'll put down that hot dog and the soda pop and maybe actually watch the football game. So just, just stay on it. You're not going to make them great if they're not very good. But you can become better if you continue to I, I think this all wrap this all up. It's all about the, the passion of the game. A lot of you have been doing this for a long time, comes pretty natural to you. Kind of just jump into it and do a great job. But you know, if you have the passion to get better every game, you will. If you don't, you're probably getting worse. Those players stay about the same age, we get a little older. So practice all the time. When you're out running around on the grass, think about football and how you run during a football game. You're just doing those scrimmages like it's a playoff game. Practice that way, play that way. Many of you have heard me speak of seeing this quote. I, I believe it completely. I've, I've never considered myself the smartest or the fastest or or the, or the best, but I refuse to be outworked. Because if if I keep working and keep trying to improve, I'll be, I'll be better than I was last game. Sometimes I was okay, sometimes I wasn't very good, but I'm always looking to to get better. And I think if we all take that approach, we will get better. Once again, thanks for this opportunity. Thanks Ken, certainly Dana for that great introduction. Dana and I go way back and she's been a huge advocate for officiating in New Mexico. And you all owe her debt of gratitude. So with that, I don't know how well it'll work in a conference, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Lan, that was all fantastic stuff. I know we all have a question, let's limit it to a couple. And if everybody can continue to mute their microphones. Lan, I just have a question about your conditioning. You're obviously in great shape. You just tell us a couple of things on what you do.
Uh, what I I do, I work out a lot because I have a little OCD problem. You know, my, my in-season routine is get home from a game, usually they're late Sunday night or early Sunday morning. Go to work. But after work, you know, I'll do a recovery run and then usually some, you know, some leg work. Tuesday mornings, lift. Tuesday afternoon, do some, you know, more cardio. Bike or elliptical, something easy on the knees. Wednesday, lift morning, Wednesday night, do some football stuff, you know, speed drills, those kind of things. Thursday morning lift, Thursday afternoon or evening, I take it off, take a little break. Go out with my wife, do some church stuff. And Friday morning lift again, Friday night, do some light football stuff to, to keep loose. So usually fly out Saturday morning, try to get to the hotel, work out a little bit, stretch out a lot and do a little stationary back face kind of thing. And then hopefully Sunday, I'm, I'm feeling good and be able to run around a little bit.
Okay, Lan, we have one question that was put in the chat. It's more towards a, a rule, but just go ahead and try to answer it more of a philosophy. If you like, more of a philosophy. Of, now I'll read it to you. What, what is the rule of thumb on the blindside block, especially on full action plays like kick returns, etc. It seems like we always get heat from one coach about whether or not the, the player saw someone coming.
Well, I'm probably not the guy to talk about high school rules because frankly, I don't know them anymore. But you know, I, I can tell you in the NFL, it's, it's not, it probably is difficult as it is at the high school. Because we don't care if, if you're paying attention and can see him coming or not. If it's parallel or back to your goal line, it's, it's a blindside block. So that's a safety foul. So I mean, I would just, because it's, it's, believe it or not, it's hard to tell whether it's parallel or back. So you know, if some, if a kid gets blown up, I, I would call it. If, if he can see him coming and can brace him to you know, avoid, avoid the contact, it's probably, it may not be.
Right. And I think, I think the big thing in the high school rule is whether you're leading with the hands or not. Because there still is the legal blindside block, but you have to lead with your hands, so.
Yeah, good point. And that's, that's the same, you know, it's got to be shoulder, head, forearm for us. So yeah, if he puts his hands out and you know, gives him a big shove and you know, he goes head over, over feet and it's just a big train wreck, that's still legal.
Thank you. Talk to us about your promotion to referee, please. What, how is your weekly preparation going to change or are you looking forward to it?
Definitely looking forward to it because I, I think I'm a lot better referee than I am a field judge. But yeah, I, I'm very excited. It's, you know, as a referee, it's, it's a lot the same preparation. Because you know, you asked about my, my workout routine, but also that two, three hours a day that I'm spending, going over rules and going over video, well, that probably doubles now from a white hat perspective. But you know, it's, it's it's, it's an honor. I mean, there are 17 of us in the world and I have just been blessed to end up as one of them. And you know, those of you who, you know, know me for a while, I saw Mickey and a few other people on, on the line. My, my path was not normal, I guess. Kind of, a little, little delayed for a lot of reasons. And I kind of got into certainly the NFL late and didn't expect to rise to the referee, but time and circumstances. So you, you got to be ready. That's, that's, that's my advice. I tell, I've told the story a lot, many of you may have heard it. And when I got into the Mountain West, I was hired by Bill Levy. And if you weren't six foot tall and flat stomached and could run, you weren't getting in. That's just, that's just the way it was. But right after that, Ken Rivera was the supervisor. And you know, then a bunch, you know, kind of shorter, maybe not so slim guys were getting in. So you know, it's, it's time and circumstances. So you know, just do your best and hopefully the workout. It certainly has worked out for me.
Somebody want to jump in with another question before we wrap it up with Lan? All right, Dana, do you have anything, anything you want to say Dana?
Um, yeah, I typed a little note to everybody. I hope that everybody took good notes. You can't, you can't get this information for free usually. So I really hope everybody got something out of this because I know I took about six pages of notes myself. But Lan, I just want to say thank you so much. And I've told a number of people of this since I learned of your promotion. No one in the world deserves this more than you do. It's your humility, it's your commitment to the, the avocation at our level, the profession at your level. And we just, you know, we appreciate the fact that you've never forgotten where you came from. And not everybody advances to the next level and keeps that level of a head. So you're certainly an example, not just when it comes to football knowledge and physical conditioning and all of that. But when it comes to just keeping a good head on your shoulders and, and not forgetting your roots. And your, your humility is, is top notch. And I just, you know, I thank you so much for everything you've done for the NFL. keeping a good head on your shoulders and, and not forgetting your roots. And your, your humility is, is top notch. And I just, you know, I thank you so much for everything you've done for the NMOA. And I, I think we're all celebrating your, your promotion. So thank you so much. And we'll continue to, to look to you and you know, definitely we're looking forward to watching you with that NFL white hat on this season and keeping, keeping hope that there is a season. So thanks, thanks again for everything. And everybody that's on this webinar, just know, and Lan, I'm sorry, I'm throwing you under the bus here, but Lan is always approachable and always willing to help in any way possible. He's, he's never gotten too big for us. So I appreciate that. And Lan, thank you again.
Thank you, Dana.
Lan, thank you for joining us. Really, really appreciate it. Guys, before you get off, Dennis has our upcoming lineup. If you could listen to him for just a moment, we've got some good guests coming on our program here in the next week or so.
Yeah, so I don't know how we're gonna, I don't know how we're gonna follow a talk from Lan, but we're gonna give it a shot. On Tuesday, 6:00 PM, we'll have Frank Villar, newly promoted referee in the Pac-12. He'll be talking about the umpire position. On Wednesday, we'll have another Pac-12 umpire, Roscoe. And, and he'll be talking umpire stuff also. Thursday, 6:00 PM, Mike Contreras, which is retired, center judge from the Big 12. He's the RMAC coordinator. And then next Saturday will be the NFL referee, Brad Rogers. And then we'll go from there and see how this Corona lockdown takes us into the end of April and May.
Thank you, guys, for joining us. Look forward to seeing you again. Stay healthy. God bless.
Thanks, guys.
If anybody wants to stay around and talk some football, we'll, we'll still stay on. Boy, the amount of knowledge that man has is unbelievable.
So Ken, I'll have to ask Brad Rogers, or kind of share this next week too, when he's on. But back when I was in college, I did a, you know, one season, we had a, you know, low level, you know, AF2 team out there in Lubbock. And I worked chains and Brad was the headlinesman on that group. Remember after one play, he turns to me and he's like, like, "Man, I hate down by contact." I just remembered that and kind of found it a little ironic after he got promoted to the NFL.
Yeah, I think we had a conversation about down by contact last week. And I think we want to use the term forward progress.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for us. But this was back, I think this was probably the only level he was calling at that time. Because I want to say he I mean, this was like 15 years ago or so. I think he was out, I want to say he was calling out of the Pac-10 at that time.
Yeah, no, that was what we had in our, our NCAA discussion, the whole down by contact versus forward progress. Go ahead and explain it.
But it was, it was just funny to have him, you know, I, I remember that when he just turned to me that one time, I was like, "Man, I hate down by contact." And then, you know, 15 years later, I see him get promoted up into the NFL.
Yeah, let's see what he says about that one, huh?
Hey, Todd, how do you know Brad? How do you know Mr. Rogers?
Well, I think he's on, actually. But I met Brad last year about this point in time. Eastern had a scrimmage going on in Clovis at our high school field there. And they were short officials from the Lone Star. So Tim had called some people. And so I was lucky enough and me and Evan Baker and Nick Holmes, we all joined in and, and got in, in line with those guys. And sure, sure enough, Brad was, showed up in Clovis, New Mexico on a, I think it was a Thursday night. And the most incredible humble guy you're gonna ever meet. You think Lan's humble. The man is, I, if I'm right, I think he's on, but he's not gonna talk. So but he's a very incredible guy that reached out to me and him and I have been in contact. Phone calls, texts over the last year has been incredible. He is, he is an amazing man to, to just sit down and talk to and just about philosophy. And that was something I was gonna ask you guys, if there was something particular you wanted from him to be able to, to do that. You know, if he was listening today, I'm not sure if he was or wasn't. But, you know, if, you know, it would be able to help him out to create his, his presentation. But, you know, it's a lot about philosophy and what, what is a foul? You know, he can present about anything. I mean, I've spent three hours with the guy in his Lubbock classroom, just watching film and talking football. And the man loves talking football. And just a good guy. So whatever you guys want to do.
We can create the PowerPoint or he can have his own PowerPoint, whatever. Let us know.
We're gonna let him create everything he wants to talk about.
Yeah, he's got, he's got lots of film. He's got lots of, of training video that, that he has shared with me some. You know what I mean? A little bit throughout this time with me. Because he's kind of, I mean, I, it was weird. I kind of asked him to mentor me for this college part of it because the Lubbock chapter is pretty strong. I mean, you got guys that are out of the SEC, Lone Star, you know, you know, on my college journey right now. And so that's, that's been a good help, you know, to know him. And there's, there's guys like Marcus Thornton that did the Division One National, or Division Two National Championship this year that's just from Ambrel, Texas. He's also a guy that I ask for simple questions about college stuff. And, you know, these guys are, they're legit. And the way CFO, you remember at the CFO thing in Dallas in January? They said they don't hire assholes or they don't hire jerks. You know what I mean? And so all of these guys are approachable and very, very willing to share it because they were with us. You know, they can remember stories about when they were calling in New Mexico. Because you got to remember, Brad kind of grew up in New Mexico in a sense. Kid was in the Gallup area. His family was, was there for a while. And then they ended up in Texas and moved around from there. But yeah, he's got a story. It's just funny that we share stories about New Mexico coaches with him every once in a while. We go, yeah, there was a guy at New Mexico Military Institute. And so it was, it was pretty funny that we both had, had the same artist coach that we worked with, the same guy. You know, and this guy's working, again, worked with Nick Saban and, you know, Les Miles and all of those guys you see on Saturday. But if you'll just email me and tell me, guys, what you want to know from him, because he's kind of gonna ask me for, for some information that maybe he would like to share, stuff that we want to, we want to talk about.
That's fine. Well, guys, guys have been texting and emailing Dennis, myself. So we'll, we'll get the group collective ideas on what, you know, some topics and we'll get to.
Yeah, and I, and I sat through his, his presentation that he gave at the Lone Star Clinic in January. That's where me and Dave Langley and Hector Martinez met him at the Spring Clinic for the Lone Star. And so I have a few ideas just from what his presentation was. And his on-field mentorship was and what he talked about back in January. So I'll shoot you some ideas after Ken gives me his and then he could pick. And just like what Lan did, he just talked about what was in his heart and what he thought was important for us. So.
All right, guys, let's wrap it up. We're trying not to ever go past an hour. A lot of you guys that stuck around, thank you, Mickey, Stu, you know, all the rest of you guys. Appreciate it. You guys take care, stay healthy. Peace.